... Um.
We would point to one wish.
Well, it better be better.
Yeah.
It is very redundant.
Right.
We're sorry.
So she won a lot. She got a lot from them. All the new kids coming out excited like talking to each other and playing with each other every day to take themselves away.
Right.
You know a lot of other things. You don't want to talk to them.
Yeah, but you want them to do it.
Yeah, they're all upset about it, you know, but they come by twice a week, right? You know that? They did. They go to the game over. They had that thing on the house though.
Oh, I know.
They intend on making houses bigger. When they're proud of you, right?
I don't know.
They do. They met. They met me through a photo and they said, yeah, and they met each other. Yeah. And they said, you know, you're a good girl. You have an amazing baby. That's what we thought. Right? You don't have a problem with this, right? Yeah. Okay. Oh, she got a kid. That's where they were. He loves it. But not for the ground. Maybe next year he'll be back. Let's call him that. He's beautiful and handsome. Yeah. Yeah, they love it. But now. Or get anything that he's got nice to be something that he can do. That's what I'm saying. Sometimes. That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Everything you need.
How much time? You're in your spot. Nicole's in her spot.
We'll not be confused. We'll not be confused. Hello, everyone.
Hi there.
Whatever you want to do. Totally fine.
I call this meeting to order. Will everybody please rise to the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and are transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call?
Mrs. Dechara.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Splendoria.
Present.
Mr. Shoner.
Present.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. Seeing none. Good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good evening.
Fantastic. Glad to hear it. Here we are yet again, and we're able to be in public for now, which is a good thing, right? Fingers crossed. Absolutely. We will start with committee reports. Anyone?
I.
Okay.
I went to two things, and I have notes this time.
Fantastic.
With dates and everything. Went to the, just some announcements about the Cedar Grove Rec Department, some items and some fun things they have scheduled. And they just announced. So on December fourth at six P M., they're going to be having a virtual tree lighting. So obviously, we normally do that in person, but.
I think that got canceled.
That got canceled, so this is all virtual.
Oh, okay.
This is all virtual. So they did switch it. So make sure you, of course, I don't have where, like, I'm sure they're going to be publishing how we can watch it. But just know that on December fourth at six P M., we will be doing the Cedar Grove Tree Lighting. The next day, on the fifth, from five P M. to seven P M., they're going to have a drive-through tree viewing, and they're going to be having holiday giveaways. So as you drive by, I guess they'll be handing out some fun gifts for the kids, and it sounds like a nice time. And then this is kind of cool. Starting on December seventh, they're going to have six hundred candle kits with six bags for each. Six bags for each household. So each household will get six bags to line their front. It's the community luminary lighting. I guess this is the first time we're doing it in Cedar Grove, right? Like, you've seen, me too, where you light it, and so then, oh, on the nineteenth at five P M., they ask that everybody in Cedar Grove that has these kits lights the candle kits, and it will just be a very beautiful night. So I think that's kind of cool. I've seen it in other towns.
So can you still get the kits, or is it?
You can. The kits will be available at Town Hall starting December seventh. There are going to be six hundred kits available. So you just, every resident can go and get one.
You go and pick up a kit. Great.
Go pick up a kit until the kits run out. There'll be six bags in each kit. So you can line your driveway, I guess, like, with three on each side. And on December nineteenth, they're saying at five P M., everybody should light them for that night. So the nineteenth will be.
That's nice. The Ridgewood Acres Neighborhood Association, they've been doing that for years and years. They do it on, they sell kits for the, just the neighborhood, and on Christmas Eve, people light up their luminaries. So the neighborhood, it's really, really nice that a lot of the neighbors do it.
It's going to be pretty. I'm happy that it came to Cedar Grove. We'll be doing it. And then I also went to the North End F S A. Meeting. That was on the twelfth. It was all virtual. Mr. Grosso was there, and I know they were delighted to have you, and that was very nice. They've done a lot. They revamped the entire North End webpage. So now you can pay your dues online. There's an F A Q. Link. There's school directories online. They're going to have a fundraiser tracker, like, you know, just to track. They're going to have a goal of what they want to do, and they're coming up with that number, and they're coming up with ideas of what they're fundraising for. And they'll have that all online. And the North End staff actually made a donation to the F S A. This year, which was very nice. Thank you so much. It's usually the other way around. But I guess they understand, the teachers understand that the F S A. Is struggling this year, and that was just very kind and just, I think, shows what a team effort the F S A. For all of our schools have with the teachers and the admin. There's a new clothing bin at North End for clothing issues only, and it's all year round. So that's kind of cool. And their next meeting is January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at seven thirty P M., virtual.
Thank you.
Dates and everything.
Fantastic. Mr. Shoner, were you going to say someplace you went to?
Well, I just wanted to talk about that the board went to on Tuesday night, the Music Matters, C G H S Music Matters honored Jen Foose for twenty years of teaching music in the district. And there was a video of students, past students, past alumnis, current teachers commenting and giving congrats to, giving congrats to her. And actually, tonight at eight o'clock on Facebook, they're going to show the stream, the video that was made. So I just wanted to congratulate her on that. And then also, I wanted to congratulate the soccer, the boys' soccer tonight. They actually won against Hasbrook Heights, taking down number two seed, and the first time we're actually going on to the state semifinals.
It's very exciting.
Which is exciting for.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yes, nice job.
And also, well, you should, Nicole, you should talk about even football. They're.
Yeah. I mean, they're having a great season.
Yes.
I mean, I.
We've totally talked about everything. You're probably going to talk about the end, didn't you?
Oh, you're getting pissed.
I didn't realize this.
I don't have the stats, so. All I know.
The superintendent is not going to talk tonight. We've stolen every piece of thunder that he has.
All of his thunder.
All right, I'm going to stop. So I did nothing. There.
Okay. So I attended the middle school F S A. Meeting last night. Yes, it was last night. It was short and sweet, but that's great. Mr. Decort talked a little bit about how they're bringing some of the clubs back virtually and thanked the board for that. There is also discussion about Treps and how they're going to try to make it a little bit different this year, but still try to continue it. And I think right now they're looking at, there's two dates in May, and they're going to run the classes for Treps virtually. And the hope is that it will be held outside the high school on the back, in the back parking lot, socially distant in May. So hopefully, that can still go on. So there's. Absolutely, yeah. And I think it's just going to depend on a level of participation. So was that in your thing, too? Okay, I didn't think so. Okay, good. See, because that's late breaking news. That was, like, only finalized this morning. So, okay. All right. And then the last thing is, I don't think we've met since before Halloween. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So we, some of us joined forces on Halloween. It was Halloween, right? The actual Halloween. I don't even know. Yes, with the town council, and we were part of their Halloween drive-by candy event on Halloween. It was from two to four. And we also had representatives from the high school, all school. It was from 2:00 to 4:00. And we also had representatives from the high school, all school council.
Yes, the old school council was there, yes.
And, yeah, and then Mr. Grosso had to get us more candy because it was so successful. So it was a lot of fun, I thought, right? It was, and there were a ton of people. I mean, they just kept coming. So.
Everyone was dressed up in their cars. It was actually great. It was wonderful for us to, you know, partner with the, with the.
It was a lot of fun. Yeah, we had a good time. So that was fun. We kind of invited ourselves, but they embraced it, and that was good.
And some of us came dressed up, too.
It was, yes, some of us dressed up. Some of us didn't because he didn't get the memo. The rest of the board was dressing up.
You left me out.
I came dressed up in board attire. I didn't have the costume on, so.
You looked fantastic. So anyway, we move on. So that's committee reports. We've moved on from that. Tonight, we have some board presentations. All right, are we going in order?
Yeah, we're going in order.
Okay, so the first one is the South End Yoga Program presentation. Okay, we do, okay.
So good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. We are very excited to share with you a new program at South End. Yoga in action, I call it, because it's wonderful to see the kids taking part in this. And I think that if any of you visited South End lately, you'll see that we're smiling a lot more and we're a lot calmer because of our new program. And, you know, when we think back to March and how our lives changed with COVID, even as adults, we worked hard to try to rationalize what was happening, and we still do. And for our kids, they were struggling in the spring. One of the things that we heard time and again from our children were that they were overwhelmed, they were confused, they wanted to be back in school, they wanted to be back with their friends. And so we knew that as the new school year approached, and even though the kids would be coming back to school, school would be very different. And so we knew that that social, emotional piece was something that we needed to address and to be concerned about. At the same time that that was being discussed among the teachers and may enter our new school nurse, Dana DeTrizio. And Dana is not only an experienced nurse, but she is also a certified yoga and mindfulness teacher. And so when we thought of her expertise, we decided to kind of look at how we could make use of that in our school to help our children to cope more with the challenges and difficulties they were facing during this time. And so Dana sat with Mrs. Manning, because it really ties into much of our comprehensive health and PE, and they came up with a program that we're quite proud of. And I'm going to introduce Dana to take you through what the program is like. You can see it in action as she speaks, and if you have any questions, please do ask. So I'd like to introduce to you South End's school nurse, Dana DeTrizio. And she's going to take us through. Oh, here's the wipes. Maybe. I might need the nurse for this. There we go. I just want to wipe this.
So I'm just going to do a brief introduction, because a lot of you have already seen my intro online, I'm sure, because I sent out an email. But I'm Dana DeTrizio, and I've been a registered nurse working pediatrics for almost 20 years. I started out in Children's Hospital in Patterson at St. Joseph's. I specialized in hematology and oncology there. And from there, I, after about a decade, I started working for the Division of Child Protection and Permanency as a nurse. And I stayed there for about five years until they made an organizational shift. And then from there, I decided to become a school nurse, and this is my fifth year as a school nurse. And I also have some experience for about three years. Up until last year, I worked as a pediatric hospice nurse at Valley for their butterflies program. About three years ago, I became very passionate about yoga for myself, and I saw the effects and the benefits in my own life. And that's where I got the inspiration to become certified. I became certified in adult and in children, and it was my vision to incorporate yoga and mindfulness into my pediatric nursing practice, specifically in schools. And so I got with an organization, the certified organization called Little Flower, and I did their certification course, which I enjoyed very much. And in the school that I was working at, I was delighted to have the opportunity to create a program, to have my own after-school program. I L L C'd myself. I began going to the homes of children who pretty much had some behavioral and some medical involvement that their parents would privately pay for me to come to their homes and do some yoga and mindfulness with them at home as well. And it was all going very well until, you know, COVID. And I'm really, really happy to be back in the saddle and that role of, you know, bringing yoga and mindfulness to children in schools. It was a really difficult time to not be in touch with the kids and doing what I am very passionate about. A little bit about, well, a lot of bit about what I'm doing is, so the sessions are set up in 15-minute sessions. Each child is getting once a week, either virtually or in person. The benefits of yoga is that it improves physical and mental and emotional health and provides tools for lifelong wellness. It's a holistic approach to physical and cognitive, emotional, and social needs. Wonderful way to add exercise into a life. And it is also linked to improvement of certain illnesses that are common in children, such as asthma and diabetes, ADHD, insomnia, anxiety, and stress-related issues. Specifically with the COVID, you know, there's an anxiety. One of the main things I've seen, surprisingly, over the years, is that anxiety tends to be like the number one issue with children. And I, you know, it's, to me, I just wanted to address that with tools, provide them with the tools. So there's mindfulness piece, there's the movement piece, the yoga, the actual yoga piece, there's a meditation piece. And mindfulness is about paying attention and being in the present moment. It's about being aware that you've lost focus and regaining that focus. And that's the tool that's being taught, how to be self-aware, that I'm out of focus. Oh, let me bring my focus back. The yoga is, you know, the movement and the breathing. And the meditation is, you know, a way to, I use guided meditation with the children. And we also do a deep relaxation, which is in silence and stillness, and I only do it for a minute because I'm gauging, I'm gauging my audience. You know, some kids really love that and need that, and some kids find that very antsy, you know, so I'm just, I'm still feeling out how long to do that piece at the end. Each session contains five elements, a connection, a breathe, a move, focus, and then relax. So the connection cultivates connection and awareness to themselves, to others, and their environments. The breathing harnesses the power of the breath so that they can move their own energy and soothe their nervous systems. The movement builds a sense of personal power and, you know, lets them become aware of their neurological messages and activate their brain for learning. Focus is when they notice that they're distracted, and then they're able to bring their attention back and minimize rumination and intrusive thoughts. And at the end, there's a relaxation to restore alertness and manage overstimulation and improve their sleep quality. I find at the end of the sessions, there's a higher percentage of children that really need that. Like, they'll always say, "That was the best part." You know, just that stillness and silence at the end. And, you know, we can all use that pause in the day. And before we lay, like, they give them the choice to sit up, to lower their lids, or, you know, if they want to, they're invited to close their eyes. And they're also invited to lay back, if we're in an area like the gym where we can do that. And a lot of them will choose to just lay. And I'll say, you know, "Life is so loud, and life is so busy." You know, be respectful and be still and silent just for one minute, because even if you're not feeling like you need this, your friend might. So they all really respect that space, and they enjoy that minute. And then we just come out of it, and then we just do a share at the end where, you know, it's like based on a theme, last week's theme, last two weeks' theme was "I Am So Smart", which reflected their self-esteem. So it also spoke to, you know, the physical, the health education and, you know, standards. And I integrated the self-esteem lesson in there as well, which I do with every lesson. I tried to integrate a health education piece as well. Just, it's a good marriage of the two subjects, and it just lends itself perfectly. And, I was, there's a reason I was telling you about that. Well, so anyway, the social and emotional learning pieces is that the children develop, they improve an understanding of their self-awareness, their emotions, their strengths, their connection to their body, sensations, neurological messages. It creates awareness of personal motivations and cultivates understanding of thought patterns and the ability to notice mind wandering, improved sense of agency, capacity, and connection to inner strengths, and build self-compassion. It also touches upon self-management, you know, learning how to down-regulate themselves, social awareness, they're building compassion for others, and they're also collective. It's a collective compassion that gets built in the group and, you know, in the environment as well. It also supports the capacity to imagine someone else's perspective and cultivates improved understanding of one's impact on others and how others impact them. It also improves upon relationship skills, improving communication skills, active listening, respect for personal boundaries, provides opportunity to practice both asking and offering help and support, cultivates conflict resolution skills that prioritize respect in a relationship with others. And lastly, for the social and emotional learning, it creates responsible decision-making skills, imagining alternative courses of actions and outcomes, and awareness of, with that awareness of their impact on other people. So this is, we did, we've done yoga in the park on nice days when physical education was outside. And when it's raining or cold, we've done it. And when we did not have access to the gym, we were doing yoga mindfulness in the classrooms, in the chairs, which is not worse or better or less than, it's just different. It's, you know, the same effect. Now that we're in the gym, we're in the gym, we sit in a circle there, and we do it there. I get a lot of positive feedback from the kids, like, right on the spot, you know, as I'm walking out. They'll say, "That was great," you know, and that's always, you know, my goal is to have them enjoy themselves and have fun while we learn all these wonderful things. So I'm just going to do a little demo for you. Nothing moving because these seats are not, you know, conducive to that. But I'm just going to go through the breath work that I teach them, that we use all the time, even in our movement. It's an in-through-the-nose, out-through-the-nose breathing. You just put one hand on your heart, one hand on your belly. You could put both feet down onto the floor and just relax. Breathe in through the nose. Fill the belly up with air like a balloon on the inhale, and on the exhale, through the nose, your belly deflates. You want to get the belly nice and big on the inhale, filling the belly up. And then on the exhale, the belly goes down. One more. Just notice if you yourself felt a shift, you know, just something to notice, just a difference, whether, what that looks like for you. The belly breathing is important because a lot of us speak up here, we breathe up here in our necks, we breathe and speak from the chest and the throat, and we never really get down into the belly where we can actually activate, you know, the parasympathetic nervous system and calm ourselves down. So that's, you might have felt a shift of calm as you filled up your belly. So we use that breath all the time, and various breath works they're learning. They're also learning sigh breath and wave breath. We're going to do, you know, hands. We're doing hand mudras, which, I don't use the word mudra, we just use gesture. So there's no, all the language is secular, and all of the instruction is trauma-informed. You know, certain phrases are eliminated. I'm very aware of how I present to them. And that training has been valuable, even in my own nursing practice, on like, you know, what to really be conscious and aware of when you speak to children. Anyone have any questions?
I just think it's fantastic. It really is, you know, this is something that the board has been talking about, you know, about social, emotional stuff with COVID, prior to COVID, and it's just been a fantastic program. Because it's, there's always lots of money to do all the things you want to do, but we are doing something, and we're being proactive. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I just also set up a video, too, for the staff members, and I sent it out to the other nurse. And she's sharing it with some of the teachers and the staff at the schools. It's a chair yoga and meditation. It's geared towards adults and educators. I have every intention on, you know, doing more of that as well because part of it is, if we can, if we can down-regulate ourselves and we're professionals that are working directly with the children, it's very important that we're able to model this and be this. So, you know, so like, if your fuse is a little short, and like, we're all human, you know, the way to be self-aware and that, you know, we as professionals working closely with children learn how to take that pause and that breath, and then, you know, and then proceed to address, you know, so that we can model that, all the things that we want them to learn. Thank you.
So after Hurricane Dorian devastated the Bahamas, Kaylee Matijica, who was in second grade at South End at the time, decided she wanted to help the children of the island by supplying them with all the school supplies they would need to continue to learn. Kaylee's fundraiser spread from not just South End, but to the whole Cedar Grove community, including Staples and UPS who assisted her. Earlier this month, the Bahama Ministry of Education honored Kaylee through a Zoom presentation for her generosity and compassion for the children of the Bahamas. I was so honored to be part of that Zoom meeting. So many dignitaries were present, and each spoke from their heart about Kaylee's actions. Most heartwarming was listening to the children speak about Kaylee and thank her for all her efforts. Kaylee, in life, we certainly want you to learn all that you can to succeed and have a wonderful future. But most importantly, we want you to care for other people and reach out to help them when they are in need of help. You cared about those who you did not even know, but understood that they were hurting and they needed your help. We cannot be prouder of the person you are. Mrs. Matijica, thank you for raising a child who sees the bigger picture in life and sharing her with us. Kaylee, whenever I come into your classroom, you are the first one to greet me with a big smile and a big hello. I want you to know that the children. I want you to know that the children you helped in the Bahamas go to school every day now. And when they use those supplies, you and so many others in this town helped to send, they smile thinking of you. You truly brightened their lives. We could not be more proud of you and thank you, Kaylee, for being who you are.
There is, um, Nick, is there, there's a video. Here it is. What am I doing? This is it, right?
Yeah, those are the pictures and then...
The video's at the end?
Uh, video's actually right down here.
Well, help for the Bahamas, that is Jersey Proud. Hurricane Dorian, Cat Five, Monster devastated the Bahamas 15 months ago. One youngster in Cedar Grove saw the coverage on TV and decided to help. This is Kaylee Matijica, little girl with a huge heart. She heard of the destruction and she thought about the kids who would have trouble at school. So she started a school supply drive. The local Staples helped out, friends and teachers and families at South End Elementary in Cedar Grove all helped out. Those supplies wound up in the Bahamas and this week they had a press conference there to thank Kaylee.
We humbly accept the donations and will be sure to use the school supplies to maximize our learning experiences.
The Ministry of Education honoring Kaylee for her generosity, kindness and compassion, her school supply drive really made a difference. The principal at South End Elementary wrote me and how proud they are of Kaylee. We all are. She did Jersey Proud. Dave, that's just a wonderful story to end the week.
Just wanna say, just wanna say thank you, Kaylee. You are a remarkable person. And if it wasn't for you, like was what Ms. DiMatteo said, those kids wouldn't have what they have. So you should feel really proud of that. And you made a huge impact on people's lives. So that's a big deal, right? And you did all the way from here to another place. So that's a bigger, bigger deal. And Mom, thank you very much. I echo the words of Ms. DiMatteo. You raised a wonderful, you're a wonderful human being. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Kaylee. And you can, you actually able to go home now and rest up for tomorrow, all right? Thank you. And Dana, I wanted to say this to you. What you're doing is unbelievable. I echo Mr. Schoner's words. You have done a wonderful thing. We talked about this. Lynn called me up and said, "We've got something cooking over here." This is remarkable. It really is. And just listening to you talk and just, you're a calming experience. So thank you very much. You are impacting our children, our staff and our community as a whole. So thank you very much. Yes, absolutely. She wants to, absolutely.
Good morning. Good evening. I would like to say thank you for honoring me tonight. When I saw the destruction the hurricane had caused in the Bahamas, it made me feel very sad. I have learned that God created the earth and all the people. God gave all of us an important responsibility to take care of the earth and each other. I am happy that I was able to help the people in the Bahamas with the school supplies, but I didn't do it alone. Thank you to everyone who donated the supplies last year. Without the donation, this would not have been possible. Hope, I hope everyone has a good night. Go Panthers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Kaylee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I know, exactly. So cute.
I know, I love the screen.
I know, I like it. I like it just like that. We like it.
Well, if the superintendent has anything left to say that we haven't already said, we're ready for a superintendent update now.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you. We, um, we also had on the, on the board presentation tonight, but, um, Mrs. Jennifer Corenti was not able to make it tonight. But I do wanna just mention this. Uh, she was representing the Junior Women's Club, um, which I understand is, is no longer, but based on the, um, the, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Lost my train of thought. No, the, uh, since, I, I, there's another word I'm looking for, but I can't think of it now. Since the Junior Women's Club is no longer in existence, uh, what's that? Dissolve. Thank you. That's it. Dissolving of the Women's Club. Thank you. Um, uh, Ms. Jennifer Corenti of the Junior Women's Club has graciously donated over $300 to each school. And over the course of the past year, obviously, the Junior Women's Club of Cedar Grove has suspended operations. So the hope is that these funds will be used to support efforts within our schools and that will build community or a targeted initiative that could use some financial assistance. So I just wanna thank, um, Mrs. Jennifer Corenti and, uh, those of the previous Junior Women's Club. Uh, so to give you a brief rundown and update, I would like to give a COVID update. So with the holidays approaching, uh, we ask that members of our school community familiarize themselves with the CDC's holiday celebrations and small gatherings. Uh, I actually shared this out on the district update that was sent out last week. And it's a link, if you're unfamiliar with it, it's a link on, in the update and it kinda guides you through what you can expect and what you should be attending to when you are having a small gathering. Uh, we also ask that all members of our school community familiarize themselves with Cedar Grove Public Schools policies pertaining to COVID circumstances related to virtual to hybrid and hybrid to virtual. And that policy is 1648.1. And what that means is, is that there is a two-cycle, um, two-cycles that you are able to allow, to have your child enter into virtual and then back into hybrid. Um, once you've met those two cycles, you will then have to make a determination of whether you are going to keep your child fully virtual for the remainder of the school year or keep them hybr, uh, hybrid. Uh, and also the student travel advisory procedures during the pandemic, which is Policy 5200.1. And that breaks down, uh, for any family member that will be going out of state or out of the country. Uh, when they, when they return, they will have to fill out a form that can be found on our Return to Schools website and also in the district update. Uh, that way you would fill that out, share where you have been, the length and duration of the time that you've spent in that location, as well as, um, your actual return date. And then you will quarantine from that point on. Just to clarify, cause we've gotten some questions, uh, through that 14-day quarantining, between the, um, 48 hours prior to your return, uh, we ask that you visit Vanguard Medical. They are our district doctor. Uh, you may, you can make a tele, um, appointment with them and they will guide you through what the next steps will be and will provide you with any type of documentation that you may need. Um, so just to familiarize yourself with that and look at that policy. I also wanna introduce, um, to you Hall Pass. Hall Pass, Cedar Grove Community passed a referendum approving safety and security measures to be implemented in all of our schools. And, um, Cedar Grove, um, safety and security is, is one of our highest priorities here at Cedar Grove Public Schools. And one way to help accomplish this is through our new Hall Pass Vir, uh, Visitor Management System. And this system helps office personnel know who is in the building. Uh, all visitors entering, um, any of our school buildings will be required to sign in through this digital, um, service. And they will do this through presenting their license or their government-issued ID. It will be scanned. Uh, therefore, at that point, it will then go through a, um, a national sex offender database uh, to ensure the safety and security of our school environment. Uh, this happens within a matter of seconds and then you remove your, your license, your government-issued ID. And then what will happen next is that you will have a, a customized printed tag that you will wear while you're in the building. And then when you're finished with your visit, you will then return that tag to the office and sign up. Your sign-up procedures will take place and that tag will be disposed. So nobody else other than yourself will have been able to use that. Um, I will share with you, there will be a video coming out shortly, which is guiding you on how, what to expect when you do come to our schools. Uh, but I do wanna share that this is very exciting because this will just enhance our, um, our safety and our security for our schools, for our students and for our staff. Panther Park Multipurpose Field. Uh, Panther Park Multipurpose Field was, began breaking ground on Monday, November 9th. I shared this in our district update. This project sits in the back property of Leonard R. Park School off of Pompkin Avenue, um, which is adjacent to Panther Park. Uh, this project is a joint venture between the Township of Cedar Grove and the Cedar Grove Board of Education. So work is moving, moving rapidly on this. Uh, Mr. DeVita, myself, Mr. Gata, we have been back there several times looking at, um, the progress. They are moving, like I said before, rapidly. And we're very excited about this because we are, there's anticipated use in 2021 for our youth in our, in our community. And finally, I would just like to share the, in the area of athletics, uh, we talked a little bit about soccer prior. It's just a little bit, just a little bit. But, uh, yes, we'll do it again. Um, very proud of our boys and girls soccer teams. We've qualified for the NJSIAA State Tournament and again for our boy soccer team. And also I wanna share that our Cedar Grove High School football team has won the Super Football Conference National White Division Championship. And this is our first division championship since 2012. So we are very, very proud of our, our team. We are very proud of Coach Gogarty. And, um, I do wanna share, uh, before I end my update that I do wanna recognize, uh, Mr. Robert Gogarty for his service to our community through the time where Mr. Mangilli has left until our time awaiting for our new principal, Dustin Bayer, uh, Mr. Gogarty, he was our acting principal. And so not only was he acting principal, he was our head football coach, he was our athletic director. So he wore many, many hats and we were very, very appreciative of his service to us and to our community. And we were very fortunate to have him as part of our family. So I just wanna, uh, just thank him and congratulate him for a job well done.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna add about the, uh, the Junior Women's Club of Cedar Grove. It actually was an excellent organization and, uh, I was actually part of it years ago before I joined the board. And, uh, they did a lot of good for, for Cedar Grove, whether it was Storytime with the Easter Bunny, um, Breakfast with Santa, Mother's Market, which used to be a huge kinda flea market thing outside the high school. Um, they helped Santa with his letters, um, just numerous things, donations. Um, so I just wanna say it's kinda sad that it, uh, that it kinda dissolved. Is that the word that we're using? That was the phrase. Um, because it did a lot, a lot of good. And so, um, but just because it dissolved now, doesn't mean that, you know, if a, a group of young people who are, you know, new to town, um, might wanna get together and, and think about sort of joining forces and, and forming it again. A lot of towns have it and, uh, and it does a lot of good. And I just know that I made a lot of friendships. I mean, we're talking about, oh my gosh, my oldest is 19. 19 years ago, I became a junior and, uh, and I'm great friends with the people who, you know, I was with, in the juniors with 19 years ago. So, so it's just great. So anyway, I just thought I would bring that up, with that up. But we are very grateful for the, the donations. Moving on. So, from the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under Minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B3?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of October 26th. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of October. And B3 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation and violation of the code. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Bills, can I have a motion for B4?
So moved.
Second.
B4 is a motion to pay the following list of bills that were in our packet. Uh, any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under Business, can I have a motion for B5 through B9?
So moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to approve the Cooperative Contract for Ice Hockey with Passaic Valley Regional High School for the 2021 school year. I'm gonna read B6 because I think it's really, really important. B6 is a motion to approve the below resolution to oppose S-2843 slash A-1911. Whereas Senate Bill 2843 and Assembly Bill 1911, currently pending in the state legislature, establish various measures to provide employment stability for high school coaches employed in school districts. And whereas the job protections mandated by S-2843A-1911 include three-year contracts for head coaches and two-year contracts for assistant coaches. And whereas S-2843A-1911 includes several other employment protections for coaches that would severely inhibit a Board of Education's authority to make prompt and decisive personnel actions. And whereas the preferential treatment of and granting of stronger protections to coaches is inequitable and gives the impression that they are more valuable or important to the educational community than other school employees. And whereas existing laws and regulations, along with collective bargaining agreements, provide all employees with protection against unjust termination. And whereas the intent of S-2843A-1911 to provide protections from the arbitrary dismissal of high school coaches from their positions must be balanced with a Board of Education's obligation to make personnel decisions based on educational needs, financial capacity and operational considerations. And whereas this bill constitutes an unnecessary and inappropriate overreach and if enacted will tie the hands of local school board members and administrators, preventing them from making sound personnel decisions that they deem to be in the best interest of students, parents and the overall school community. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Cedar Grove Board of Education urges the State Senate, General Assembly and the Governor to oppose S-2843A-1911 and be it further resolved that this resolution be delivered to Governor Phil Murphy, State Senate President Stephen Sweeney, Assembly Speaker Craig Cochran and the 40th Legislative District's representatives in the State Senate and General Assembly. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the New Jersey School Boards Association. B7 is a motion to accept the generous donation from the Junior Women's Club of Cedar Grove in the amount of $1,255.40. B8 is a motion to approve the demographic services for the district. And B9 is approval of emergency contract. And that's it. Any discussion?
No.
No. I just wanna emphasize that for B6 and where, the reason why we have this as a, an agenda item and the reason why we, we all stand firm on this is that we absolutely support every single member who we employ in this district. But to be clear, the Board of Education should have the absolute right to decide if a coach, or anybody else for that matter, in this capacity isn't right for the district or for our students. And if this gets passed in the state, the Board of Education loses that right. And if this gets passed in the state, the Board of Education loses that right. And that right should remain with us. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through, there's a lot, S19?
So moved.
S1 is HIB Investigation Resolutions for Superintendent's Report. S2 is a motion to approve the submission of the school self-assessments for determining grades under Anti-Bullying Rights, Bill of Rights Act for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. S3 is a motion to retroactively approve Dean Strout, high school math teacher from November 16th to June 30th at the rate listed. S4 is a motion to retroactively approve Catherine Farley, North End paraprofessional, starting on November 9th through June 23rd at a salary listed. S5 is a motion to approve Samantha Nemeth, North End paraprofessional, starting November 23rd through June 23rd at a salary listed. S6 is a motion to retroactively approve Maureen Ho, Night, North End school aide at the hourly rate listed. S7 is a motion to approve Eliza Russo, South End parent volunteer for the 2021 school year. S8 is a motion to rescind S14 on the October 16th agenda that was previously approved on the July 23rd agenda. S9 is a motion to retroactively approve the following middle school morning assistants at the rate listed. S10 is a motion to approve Christina La Citra to provide supplemental instruction for the 2021 school year. S11 is a motion to approve Mina Farinas to provide home instruction for the 2021 school year at the rate listed. And S12 is a motion to approve the following coaches for the 2021 school year. Whereas the Cedar Grove District seeks to appoint coaching staff for the 2021 school year winter sports season. And whereas the Cedar Grove School District will pay the full stipend associated with the coaching of a particular sport in the event that the sports season is conducted in full. And whereas the Cedar Grove School District will not pay the amount of the stipend or pay a prorated amount of the stipend associated with the coaching of a particular sport in the event that all or a portion of the sport is not conducted due to a declared state of emergency, declared public health emergency or directive by the appropriate health agency or officer to institute a public health-related closure or directive from the appropriate representative of the New Jersey Department of Education or a directive from the governor or designee of the New Jersey Legislature or designee, or should the Cedar Grove School District adopt a permissible virtual or remote learning platform or that the school year itself might be modified. And whereas in the event that the sports season is either canceled or reduced or modified, the stipend will not be paid or will be prorated to commensurate with the percentage of the sports season that is actually conducted. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cedar Grove School District approves the following appointments contingent on the sports season running and becoming operational and with the stipend not be paid if the sports season is canceled or prorated should the sports season not be completed because of a declared state of emergency, declared public health emergency or directive by the appropriate health agency or officer to institute a public health-related closure or directive from the appropriate representative of the New Jersey Department of Education or directive from the governor or designee or the New Jersey Legislature or designee. A lot of words.
A lot of words.
S13 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. S14 is a motion to extend teaching employment to Teresa Ardo, contracted maternity leave coverage teacher for Alexandra Castillo. S15 is a motion to extend teaching employment for Jennifer Walter, maternity leave coverage teacher for Ariel Benedito. S16 is a motion to approve the date change of the travel club, Japantr. S17 is a motion to approve the following as substitute teachers. S18 is a motion to accept the resignation of Laura Sax for purposes of retirement. And S19 is a motion to accept the resignation of Vincent Parada. Any discussion?
No.
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 And I just, um, want a clarification, Mr. Grosso, that the winter coaches that we're approving tonight have all been given the wording and the language as far as the proration in the event that the season is either canceled or shortened?
It was, uh, shared with the CGEIA.
Perfect. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under policies, can I have a motion for S20?
So moved.
Second.
And are you reading this or do we already do that?
Oh, I got something quick here.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to read it first.
That's what I thought because it said first reading, but...
Yep, the first reading for a new bylaw. Uh, this is for, uh, bylaw 164.6. It's the remote. Take this. There we go. There's my mint too. Sorry. I forgot I was doing it. This is for the remote public board meeting during a declared emergency. The, the purpose of this new bylaw is to be in compliance with the new administrative code, which requires the board use electronic communication equipment that has some very specific capabilities. The board must determine if members of the public are required to state if they wish to speak and to identify themselves prior to speaking, which we will require. Also to designate a school official responsible for creating the meeting agenda to accept public comment in advance of the remote public meeting, which will be the board secretary. Also to determine if the board will accept public comment during the remote meeting via text messages, which we will not. And lastly, to establish a reasonable time limit for each public comment made during the remote meeting and to read each written comment submitted to a designated official prior to the remote meeting, uh, which will be three minutes. And this bylaw is mandated.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S21?
So moved.
Second.
S21 is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services for the 2021 school year. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Seeing none. Announcement of future meetings. Why, we don't meet again for almost a month. Wow. All right. Uh, future meetings, December 15th. Same place, same time. Hopefully, we don't have to worry about that virtual mandated language that you just discussed, uh, Mr. DeVita. And then our reorg, January 2021. Wow. All right. Anyway, all right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is over. Everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.